Hey, it is 12 o'clock noon, so I want to be respectful of everyone's time. Welcome, everybody, and thank you for joining us on a beautiful Friday afternoon. Good to see everyone's faces and smiles, and I hope everyone's been able to enjoy a lovely week we've had weather-wise. So before we get started, I'll go ahead and read our board norms and protocols as we do every meeting, just as a nice reminder for all of us that as a board and staff, we agree to respect differences of opinions in making decisions for the district, to follow best practices in managing the superintendent, and the management of the board itself, to stay on task when conducting business for the district, including while at board meetings, to never surprise the superintendent or each other when conducting official business of the district, to read these norms at the beginning of each board meeting and at board workshops as a reminder of how to conduct our meetings, and to continually self-check to determine if we are following our norms when conducting district business. But that's just a quick reminder for everyone. Again, welcome and thank you for being with us, especially all those that are watching in our community or other staff members. Welcome. Bridgette, would you please do a roll call for us?
Hi, Sherwell, Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, present.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, present.
Janie Humphries.
Janie Humphries, present.
Randy Lopez.
Randy Lopez, present.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, present.
Baldinia Nguyen.
Baldinia Nguyen, present.
Stacy Yeager.
Stacy, present. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
Great. Thank you, everybody. I'll now entertain a motion to approve our special agenda today.
So moved.
Seconded.
Been moved and seconded. Any questions? Bridgette, would you please do a roll call? Thank you.
Certainly. Yolanda Clark?
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew?
Maxine Drew, yes.
Janie Humphries?
Janie Humphries, yes.
Randy Lopez?
Randy Lopez, yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page?
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Baldinia Nguyen?
Baldinia Nguyen, yes.
Stacy Yeager?
Stacy, yes.
Thank you, everyone.
Great. Thank you. Now, we'll go ahead and move on with our agenda to try to respect everyone's time. So we first have our board discussion to do our self-evaluation and discussion. And this was supposed to be facilitated by KASB. Unfortunately, due to unforeseen circumstances, Marcia has asked to reschedule, and in honoring her request and conversations with her and the board members and Ms. Page, we thought it would be best to go ahead and honor that board. I sent you an email, so if you want to reference that as well in terms of why we would need to reschedule. So I will be connecting with Marcia next week, early next week, to try to find some follow-up dates, and then I'll coordinate, either Bridgette or I will coordinate with the board to schedule a date. I do think it is still important for us as a board to continue through this journey of our self-evaluation, more importantly, to focus on our values, and to really dig deep on what are our values that we hold as a board, for our district, for our superintendent, and as we jump into this school year with the challenges, but yet the opportunities that we have as a district, I think it's important for us to continue having these thoughtful conversations around our values, around our goals, around how we want to hold ourselves accountable and hold our district accountable, but in a positive way. So I think it's important that we continue these conversations. So we'll just reschedule that. We'd like to get something on the schedule or on the calendar within the next couple of weeks. So be on the lookout for some possible dates for us to continue that conversation. So just wanted to put that out there. Any thoughts or questions? Again, I'll reach out, or Marcia's going to reach out to me early next week, but any thoughts or questions before we continue moving on with our agenda? Great. Thank you, everybody. Okay, so we'll go on with our agenda. Again, I want to just say, before we jump into the updates, again, thank you to our staff for continuing to work hard on both the reentry plan, the learning management system, what the first nine weeks will look like virtually, not only for our teachers and students, but their families as well. I think this is an important opportunity for us to get a better handle and understanding on what our first nine weeks will look like, but beyond that as well. I think this is a continuing and moving living plan that we need to continue to adjust every single day, and so I appreciate your hard work that you've put into it. You should have received, staff that are giving an update today, you should have received some questions that our board members put together to help inform and guide some of the conversation that we have today. So board members, please know I did forward those on to our staff, and hopefully they'll be able to address most, if not all, of those questions. There may be some things that might not get addressed, and that's okay, but they will make note of those things and hopefully get us some answers for next Tuesday's board meeting if we can't address everything today. But as always, questions might pop up today, and that's good. That's part of our learning. And if you do have questions, I'd encourage you to ask some questions, and let's have some patience with our staff as they, if they don't have the answer right away, then our hope would be that you would have that by next Tuesday's board meeting, or sooner, as we continue to work through these things. So again, thank you to our staff and our board. This is a team effort to get this moving, and as we embark on a new school year, we need to continue to work together to support our students, their families, the challenges that they'll face, and for our teachers and staff as well, the challenges we'll all face. But I promise you, we're going to get through this together, and we will have a great school year, I promise. So with that, we'll go ahead and get started with our first COVID-19 school reentry update.
Good morning, Board President, or actually, it's afternoon. Good afternoon, Board President Lopez. I know we're a little after noon. Madam Vice President, fellow members of the board, Dr. Faust, it's our pleasure to bring you an update on where we're going. Thank you for those questions. We've done our best to embed as many of those answers within the summary that you guys received last night. I'm hoping that it was some good bedtime reading to help you relax at night and just look over some things. So we're very excited about the opportunity to bring these forward. What I'll be doing is sharing my screen, and we'll be going through the document. We will have different members of the team, team leaders, actually talking about some of the high points, and maybe some of the things that we know are definitely of concern to the community as well as our board. And at that point, when we finish, we would just ask if you could, if you could please wait and have questions at the end, and we're happy to explain everything to you guys and hope to answer everything you guys have in motion. So I'm going to go ahead and share my screen, and we're going to have Matt Anderson kick us off, as he's the lead on the schools team.
Afternoon, Mr. President, Madam Vice President, Dr. Faust, board. I hope you're all doing well today. Just wanted to highlight some of the key points of the remote learning plan from a teaching and learning aspect. Just wanted to touch base quickly on what's the difference between continuous learning from the spring and what is the difference between remote learning this fall. And so some things that we have to take into consideration are things such as attendance. Attendance in the spring was waived based on just all of the situations that every district was going through. This fall, we are required by the state of Kansas to have attendance records, so that will be a required system. We are also moving forward, hopefully, with a new learning management system. So instead of using CSO and Google Classroom, we would move into a more solid and robust learning management system for our families. Another thing that we wanted to talk about is a lot of the instruction that happened in the spring was asynchronous, or asynchronous, for those who don't know what that means. It's a self-directed time. There may have been a recording of a video that students could watch at their, at the time that worked best for them. This spring, or this fall, our goal is to have more opportunities for synchronous learning, where it's in-person, and by in-person, I mean face-to-face with a video conference, and still have opportunities for asynchronous learning, where students will be able to watch it at a later time based on how their lives are at home. So just, those are some big overview pieces. So you know, we do have to continue grading. We will follow board policy on that, and then assessments, KSDE. We will do our own in-house assessments through our assessment systems, but anything through KSDE at this point has not been solidified yet. So just wanted to give you an update on that. Attendance is a big topic right now. According to the state of Kansas, we have to take attendance, and one of the ways to take attendance is through a daily log. A daily log consists of the learning activities that students were engaged in over the course of a day, and we have to have 360 minutes of learning activities. Now, I wanted to just quickly say that that 360 minutes does not mean that a student is on the computer for 360 minutes in their day. That learning can look multiple ways. It could be where they are online with their teacher, with some face-to-face conferences. There may be opportunities where they have projects to do that the teacher has posted through the learning management system. There may be group discussion boards. There might be just independent practice, but all of those things would be documented through the log. We are working with the state of Kansas, as well as surrounding districts, to figure out what's the best way to do that digitally and through paper, because we know that not everyone will have that access. So we're still working out some of those details as we go, but that is key to funding in our district. So we are working hard to figure out what that's going to look like specifically. There is a couple of ways that we could bypass the daily logs, and one of the ways that we could do that is a building is closed for onsite learning, however, remote services are provided, and teachers can still take attendance as normal. And so that may look a few different ways. We're working with the state of Kansas to figure that out and how we might be able to do that versus trying to collect 23,000 daily logs. Our goal has been to focus at this point primarily on solidifying our remote learning plan. However, when principals returned in July, they started thinking about all those different plans that we had available for you to look at, and so our principals have already started to think about what are the ways to mitigate the risk of contracting the COVID virus. And so they've thought about ways to configure their classrooms, how students move throughout the day, and how they're going to achieve social distancing. Co-curricular extracurricular activities, we're using the guidelines from CACIA, as well as from the UG. Something I wanted to just reiterate to you all is, on August 11th, Tammy Romstad, our athletic director, and Jody Lynn, our coordinator of fine arts and physical education, will be giving you an update on the co-curricular and extracurricular activities, as well as athletics. It'll move us forward. Special education services, by law, we are to provide those services to our students. We have to ensure that we are following their IEPs. We will be holding IEP meetings, and I know Kelly, our Dr. Charles, and her team are working really hard to get all of that figured out, but they had a good start with it in the spring, and I know that they are solidifying their plans for the fall. So you have that information there. Professional development, we know that this is key to ensuring that we have a solid or a successful implementation. So here is our tentative plan for professional development, including principals, school leaders, our teachers, and then we've also included some information around substitutes, which I know Kelly Tushman will be talking about here, too. So you can see that we have a tentative plan ready to go for when staff return to work. The tutoring, varsity tutoring, we're no longer going to move forward with them. However, we still require teachers to meet with kids on a regular basis throughout this remote learning. They'll have office hours, and we are solidifying what that will look like when we return to remote learning. So that's my section in a nutshell.
Okay, this is Kelly Tushman. Hello. Good afternoon. So some of the questions you asked was around sub-training plans, and so I wanted to let you know, as we did last year, we will do again this year, which is provide some training for our subs. Of course, with the remote learning, we want to also make sure they have the technology training, and they have mandatory trainings that they have to also provide, that they have to be trained on as well. So we have several dates that we will be talking to the subs that are available to them for those online trainings. And then those substitute teachers who are on long-term arrangements with us will get the same training as our teachers do. And you can see the dates that we have there for them as well. And then if there's other trainings that happen throughout the course of this time period, they'll also be involved in that, and they do get paid for that, and I've put that down there, $150 per day of training. Then I think one of the other questions that came up is around how do we handle COVID-19 leave? That is just another leave that we handle in the HR department, similar to FMLA-type leave, and we have a whole chart of various reasons that a person can be out, from themselves being sick to maybe a family member being sick, or maybe they've been exposed, or maybe they have to quarantine because they travel to an area that is a hotspot. So we have a whole chart. Stephen, if you'll go down. I don't know where, maybe it's not, is it further down? Anyway, there is a chart that I thought was in your packet that has all the reasons why we might, a person might ask for leave. Oh, there it is, right there. And then how we handle that, and this is handled by our leave department and HR. And so when a person feels like they need to be out on leave, or if they've been exposed and we've asked them to leave, we follow basically these guidelines. And we have also trained on this now seven different times with principals and supervisors and IOs and district leadership to make sure that everybody's aware of what the various leave issues might be and how to handle them. Most of the time, they just know to send it to HR. We have a specific email address where people can address this directly with these concerns, and we, our leave team gets back with them, and they handle every aspect of that person being out on leave. So there have been, obviously with the Families First Coronavirus Response Act, there's obviously different things that we now have to track. And part of what people can be out on leave for is if they also have issues with childcare or their own student or family member, school is closed, and so that is also an allowable reason to be out on leave. And this act goes through December 31st, and after that, I don't know what is the plan for after that point. But that is what we've been doing around the COVID-19 leave that comes up, and as I said, it's been publicized several times. We've trained on it several times. It's all over our website, how to contact us in case people have questions around this. And then I think the other, there was a question about contact tracing, which I know Elizabeth Morris is going to talk a little bit more about. The contact tracing, of course, when a person has developed symptoms or things that they might have been exposed, we also have to go through a process of understanding who they might have come into contact with, and we have a form that we will be, that we develop to basically keep track of that information. And then, of course, there's communications that we send out to district employees that are impacted, and just the impacted ones, if in case somebody has in fact been tested positive, or thinks that they have been exposed. Okay, Stephen, I think, go on down. I think, see, what was the other questions, maybe around, I think we'll get to it next, classified staff. We'll get to that at the very end. Okay. Thank
Good afternoon. This is Elizabeth Morris, and the Health Services Coordinator, and I'm just going to briefly touch on what the role of Health Services will be throughout the remote learning plan. So myself, our lead nurses, and our school nurses will all continue to support staff, students, and families throughout remote learning. As Matt said, attendance is going to be very important throughout remote learning, and so one of our roles will be to assist with follow-up on attendance and truancy to determine if any of the absences are related to illness. We'll also be a resource, an ongoing resource for all health-related, as well as COVID-related issues. And then if we do have any student or staff exposures, whether those be within a building, or if they occur out in the community, then the nurses will be trained by myself and the Health Department to be able to investigate those situations and provide recommendations to Human Resources, principals, or supervisors if anyone needs to isolate or quarantine. And those, of course, will be based on CDC and Wyandotte County Health Department guidelines. So you can see, there's a table there that was developed in accordance with direct communication with the Health Department, so that we're following all of their guidelines, which are very specific to Wyandotte County.
Good afternoon, board. Want to talk about, from a nutritional services standpoint, how we'll be handling meals during the virtual learning period. As we transition from summer to what would be considered a normal school year, there are several differences in what we can and can't do when it comes to food service. One of the primary goals that we have is to expand our meal offerings and our sites. We also need to prepare for inclement weather. We know it's hot now. It will get cold, and so as we look to expand our meal sites, we wanted to ensure that our staff could be out of the elements as much as possible. Some of the major differences between summer meal service and school meal service, during the summer, we can offer meals to any child under the age of 18. They can be KCKPS students, or they can be just any child from anywhere. During the school year, we are limited to serving only students that are enrolled in KCKPS. Additionally, students will be charged for meals in accordance with their lunch application status. And so there will be a very robust pre-order process, so that we make sure that we get the correct meal to the correct student at the correct location. It's going to be, take a lot of coordination from logistical standpoint, but it's very important to us to make sure that we are accountable for the meals, all the way down to the individual child. So as Stephen scrolls down, you can see the 24 sites that we've identified. We have made some changes to our current sites in order to prepare for inclement weather, but we do believe that these 24 sites will help expand the meals that we offer wider, and also prepare us for inclement weather as it continues to get colder and hotter all at the same time.
Good afternoon, everybody. Doug Clements, Director of Physical Properties. Good to see you all. Wanted to talk very quickly about utilization of some of our 186 staff that have now returned, or will be returning to work. We certainly have plenty of work. Would be very happy to receive some assistance from those folks. Those things are listed here, not the least of which is assistance with our custodial services, additional cleaning, both at the end of summer final clean and the additional cleaning and disinfecting with additional staff now back in the buildings. You know, the CDC, their recommendation is you wipe down surfaces at least once a day, at least once a day. Well, we're planning on and hoping to do much better than that, really focusing on, in talking about doing at least every two hours, probably a mid-morning, noon, mid-afternoon, and then getting in the evening before we do our final disinfecting for the day. And we would certainly look to utilize some of those folks.
Okay. As you can see, there's a lot of information. There's a lot of questions that have been asked about what school will look like when we reopen. What we are planning to do with the communications platform is we will continue to use the own platform, media platforms that we have been using, and our stakeholders are used to receiving information from us in that way. Our own media platforms, of course, consist of the mediums that we use to disseminate information to our parents, our staff, and stakeholders in the community. And then, of course, there's paid media. So when we're talking about what we are doing and getting information out during these challenging times, there are some paid media that we definitely want to use to help supplement the communications that we are sending out with our own media. And of course, that's putting ads in the paper, radio announcements, using Univision, and helping to reach, to further reach some of the parents and our students in our community. And then, of course, then there's earned media. Earned media, we don't pay for that, of course, but these, this is a platform that's used when people are sharing our messages on social media, interviews with other local television stations. I just got an email today from one of the local news stations that wants to do an interview about our plans and how we plan to reopen after online learning. So these are great opportunities that help us to get our messages out there without having to pay for them. So again, using as many of these communications platforms as we can consistently, to have a consistent message, and to reach as many people as we can in the community. And again, we have all of these of our own media sources and these additional ones that you see here.
So thank you, Edwin, and thank you to the rest of the team for what you've shared. We have one more document that we are going to share with you. It was in regard to Board President Lopez and board members' question about classified employees. I'm going to go ahead and bring that up at this time. Kelly Tushman, our Chief of Human Resources, will be discussing this document with you. So let me just pull it up, and Kelly, the floor is yours.
You might have to scroll down here a little bit when I ask you to, but so this is our current classified positions in the district that are, that were listed as vacant. These are positions that we currently have on our website, that we're advertising for, and you can see them there. So we had, I think we go all the way down the bottom, 186 positions, I believe, and going down, Stephen, to the very last, A2, and we have now closed 12, and we have six on hold. So that still leaves 164 positions. So I want to talk about the 164 positions, to go back up to the top, Stephen. I think, you know, the biggest number of positions that we have open are bus drivers and our subs. So the bus drivers, after talking with Lenora and Miguel, even though, you know, we're not actively transporting, won't be transporting as many students for as many reasons, the fact is that we still will have bus drivers who will be leaving the district. They'll take on other employment because they may not want to be reassigned to the jobs that we have for them, and they may be able to be a driver someplace else, and so that may be their preference. So in that case, we still felt like it was necessary to have some positions still open that we are actively searching for bus drivers, because it does take about six weeks of training and then for a person to get their CDL. So it just seemed like the smart thing to do to go ahead and leave a certain number of positions open in the district, so that we could be ready to go when we do go back to in-person school. Similarly, with subs, we have sub-teachers, sub-professionals, paraprofessionals, and secretaries, and the same reason, we are currently experiencing a lot of subs who are not going to come back as subs, are not going to be available for substitute work. We will still need subs, even in the remote learning environment, and so we just want to keep searching for those positions. Of course, if they don't work, they don't get paid, so it's not really that big of an issue. It's just so that we can constantly have a search going on for people to fill those positions. And then you see that the other positions that we have are really just ones and twos here and there in our system, and we have gone through and validated these positions are still necessary with the hiring managers. And then the other place that you see that we still have, I think, 16 positions open is in our paraprofessional area, and we do still need those positions. Those are for the sped organization, and so those are positions that we need to have for grant purposes and to provide those services. So just wanted to give you an update on this, and this is in the board library as well, so you can review it and ask more questions if you need to.
And board, we are now open to questions, so our team leads will be happy to answer any questions that you may have in regard to what was presented, or any further questions that you may have.
Stephen, this is Dr. Stacy Yeager. I want to say thank you so much for the detailed information. As we look at our plan for reentry, is there any specific plan that we have for our college and career students who are going to do some college courses and some in-class learning? Is there a certain plan for those students? Is, is there a certain plan for those students?
So I can answer that, and then I'll have Dr. Bilbo Urban jump in. So yes, there is a plan. We are working with Kansas City Kansas Community College, and so I'll let Dr. Bilbo Urban give a little more information about that.
Hi, Dr. Jaeger. Thanks for the question. Yes, the team and I are working closely with KCKCC to determine what classes will be offered and how we're going to make the adjustment. Students enrolled in dual and concurrent classes will begin September the 8th with the regular students remaining in KCK. So they'll start at the same time as everyone else. Students that are enrolled in tech, those classes start August 17th. And so we have been in communication heavily with the tech center with our transportation. We have contacted parents and students to let them know. They, there was an opt-out form that students could, students and parents could choose to opt out and not attend tech this upcoming school year. And so we have currently 104 students that have opt out of tech and will not be a part of that program this year. 159 students will still be attending the tech program. And remember, those classes at tech, those are HVAC, health careers, automotive, culinary construction, medical assisted cosmetology, all of those courses that require hands-on contact hours.
Okay, thank you so much.
This is Wanda Brownie Page, and I have a follow-up question on that. Have they provided you guys what their plan is to protect students? We're saying we're sending 159 out, but have they given you an idea of what their setup? I know it's hands-on, but how are they going to protect the kids? And we need to know what they're doing and be able, hopefully, to reassure their parents that everything is going to be okay.
So there's a meeting scheduled for us and also a meeting scheduled with parents with KCKCC to walk us through the safety learning plan.
Okay, and then you said-
And I can share that information. Once that meeting is held, I think it's after, it's after our board meeting next week. But I can make sure to get that information of the safety plan to you guys.
Okay. And then you said on September the 8th, those who were not in the tech program, will it be onsite or is it virtual?
It's virtual.
Oh, okay. And do you have an idea how many kids we have signed up for that?
We're still enrolling.
Okay, all right.
Dr. Bilbo Urban, this is Dr. Nguyen. Could you help me understand? As you use the phrase dual enrollment and concurrent, do we have any students who are taking, I'll call it standalone community college courses that will start August 17th?
No, ma'am. No, ma'am.
Okay. So those virtual classes, for example, a history class at Wyandotte from 7:30 to 9:00 a.m. starts September 8th?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
And this is Wanda Brownie Page. I wanted to ask Matt the question. And again, thank you, doctor. Okay. For the attendance, is that going to be accepted for September 21st?
Yes.
During the law?
Yep. So we still have to do the kids count, and so we want to make sure that we have all of the necessary information at that time. So we will need to have the logs ready at the auditor's request.
So they're going to accept that?
Yes.
Okay.
But they'll, yeah, that's what they're going to use as their way to ensure that we've got funded is through that attendance is the daily log.
Okay.
Transportation item for that is a little bit different, right? The count for transportation from September 21 for bus riders.
That I'd have to ask Dennis.
Yes, that's correct, Randy. The count for the bus riders are the seats on the bus.
So we'll have to figure that out in terms of how, what that count's going to look like. Because if I remember correctly, potentially, we would lose the around $800,000 or so if we're just, if we just, if we don't have any bus riders on that day.
Correct.
Dr. Nguyen, again, Mr. Birch, do we have any communications outlet for the Hmong community and the Indonesian vermes?
Well, what we do through our Bright Arrow system, we are able to translate our messages through Bright Arrow. So many of our parents who are signed up, and then that's another thing. One of the plans is to make sure that we have the phone numbers and contact information updated for our parents so that when we send out those Bright Arrow messages, that we're able to communicate with them through those languages.
And, and follow-up, such as an Asian chamber or Hispanic chambers far as for job applications. I didn't see anything that sounded close to providing that vehicle for Hmong community to see the jobs are available.
Okay, so you're talking about information that we put out relating to jobs? Is that what you're asking?
Yes, your, your list included call, Hispanic news. But is there any, besides what you just mentioned, job opportunities for the Hmong community?
Well, so for the information that we put out, we do assist and help human resources with a variety of activities and getting information out. But that is, but as far as that, I would have to talk with Kelly and work with her on that and how we would do that. But it's most of the information, though, coming out from the communications department that we put out. We use it to contact our parents and people internally. So from the communication standpoint, I haven't put out or promoted anything about jobs related to jobs. Now, we have used our channel and our billboard, Dr. Nguyen, for posting information about jobs on there when videos aren't airing. But it's not in different languages, no.
No, no, no. I'm not, I'm not even crossing that bridge. But we do have a very large Hmong population, community in our dish, in our city. And I'm just saying, seemingly, just in communications, just wondering what, what perhaps we can broaden our, our, our reach and communicate with some maybe area chambers, maybe Asian chamber, things like that.
That's correct. I'll take note of that. Thank you.
Oh, and Wanda Brownie Page, since you were speaking, Mr. Birch, I had a question. Do, do they still do the old-fashioned robo-calls? Do we utilize that?
Yes, but the term is Bright Arrow.
Oh, okay.
And so that is like a robo-call system. So that calls families. So you can actually reach families through text messages, email, and a phone call. And it's the automated voice, or you can do a live voice. So there's a lot of options with that.
Thank you, because I'm a dinosaur. You gotta give me the new terminology. I appreciate it. Thank you.
You hear Bright Arrow or Infinite Campus. That's-
Internet.
Exactly. Okay.
Hey, Edwin. What type of planning is going into effect for the five days of family advocacy that we're front-loading in August before school starts to, the in-person contact with our families to explain the free lunch applications and the importance if we do end up doing the daily logs? What kind of planning are we doing with that?
Again, that is part of our reentry plan with all of the information that we're going to be putting out. We have, right now, we have drafted a, an FAQ that will go out to all of our staff, our frontline workers, that will have different categories and answers to those questions. So again, your question is a good one. There's a lot of information that we are going to be putting out, Janie, and that is one of those. So again, we have to also keep in mind, I want to suggest, is that we don't want to overload people with a lot of information at one time. So we want to do our best to strategize, to piecemeal the information that we put out there so that we won't be, so that we won't be overwhelming to some of our families that are receiving it. And then, some of our schools, we will be working with our schools for them to be sending out, making sure that they're getting information out and communicating to those parents.
I noticed in the update to the, I call it a Bible, that thousand-plus-page document from KSCE. They just updated it this week on the 5th. They have a family engagement page in it for each grade band. And it talks about porch and driveway meetings and things, things that you can do to promote family engagement. So it, I just, I saw it this morning. It's got a lot of great ideas that I didn't know if, if our staff had had a chance to look at that yet. Because there's so much information coming out, and I know they're updating this, this document several times a week. But anything that we can do that is personal in touch, I know Bright Arrow and the text messaging and all of that stuff is really good, but nothing beats the personal phone call, the, the driveway meeting, anything that is a personal contact, not just media to, to reach out to our parents, especially the length, ones with language barriers. So if we could use our, our homeless liaisons, our ESL, reach out people, anything that we can do that, that week, that five days for that personal contact, I think will help us be more successful than just relying on social media and just relying on paper and text messaging.
Many of our plans and things that you have suggested does not just rely on that. But as you know, communications and the various platforms that we have supplement those things that you just mentioned. Yes.
Yeah, the more, the more personal that we can make everything, I think is the word of mouth, neighbor reaching out to neighbor is, is proven to be very helpful.
And I'll add to that, Ms. Janie and Edwin, we do have a meeting. We're in the planning process with Student Services and Jackie's team for next week to begin talking about all of that work that's in the Bible and how do we, yes, that's exactly what it is. And how do we make sure that we're using our family liaisons and so know that that work is coming? And I think we will invite you to that meeting as well. Okay?
Parents as teachers has a great experience with that on how to reach out to the families one-on-one.
And I will also add that ESL is, and with the migrants, we're, we're planning on those and not just for that week, but ongoing. And what does that look like as a mutual community circle for, for our communities and to have opportunities in multiple languages? And then to take the, the information that's already coming out from communications and being able to dub over in the multiple languages, Hmong being one of them. So those are things that we're planning and getting into next steps of how to, how to start bridging that.
With all the experience that all of our, our different groups in our districts have, the more we work together and, and not just work in silos, I think we'll be much more effective.
Well, we, and just to, so a sidebar, we want to make sure we don't overcommit to, overcommit our employees to make sure that we're not requiring them to do something that we weren't requiring our teachers to do. You know, if they're not wanting to come in and putting them in harm's way if they're going to speak on someone's porch or face-to-face. We just want to make sure that we are following those safety protocols with the individuals.
This is Yolanda. I have a question. I think this is for Dr. Charles. Is there anything we should be aware of or parents should be aware of when it comes to the students that fall under your umbrellas or special needs students?
Yes, so I will have a presentation for our Tuesday's board meeting around this because I know that there are some questions. You know, all of this is going to be, I guess, focused on what the Office of Special Education Services says, the safety of students first and families. So we are looking at remote learning for those nine weeks and believing that the majority of our students can be served. However, we do know that there's a small group of students that could benefit from being brought in for some of those related services like physical therapy, occupational therapy. And so Mr. Goheen and I are working through that and will be talking through different scenarios with Elizabeth Morris and the Health Department, just to kind of get guidance from them as well as talking to parents about if they would be open to bringing their children in. We will have evaluations that will continue because those are things that have to continue. There aren't any waivers when it comes to special education. So we have asked for PPE for our therapists so that we'd be able to bring in really small groups of students to do that work. But then again, it will depend upon guidance from the Health Department. But we do believe that the vast majority of our students with disabilities can be served well remotely for their speech therapy, occupational therapy, and physical therapy. But on the other side, we also know about that small group that should be brought in. And so we want to do that with health and safety first.
Okay. Thank you. I have to, I have one more question. And I think this question may be for Mr. Clements. I'm not sure. I, I noticed that there are quite a few positions out there, not just in your world, but other worlds as well. But I'm kind of, I'm asking you the question. Have we thought about, I know we have a lot of open positions. What thoughts have been placed or just high level, how do we consider or think about how we should fill some of these positions? I understand the bus drivers and the six-week learning curve there. But for some of your people that will be in the buildings on a regular basis and not knowing when we will have students, have we given any thought to, should we be filling, how should we be filling, are we using our people that we have in the most strategic way?
I would say yes. Yeah, we've thought about those things. And really, all those positions that we've got are, are pretty critical positions. We're a little light on a few of those. So I would agree with the comment that was made that we've gone through and analyzed to see if we do need to fill those positions. Some of those, you know, and I agree with comments that have been made by various members of the board in the past. I, I do not like to subcontract those things out. I think we can do the work better at a cheaper rate, more efficient manner if we have them in-house. So I think that's even more critical that we do that now when things are a little bit uncertain. But yes, I would say that we've, we've looked at those things. If that answers your question, I'm not really sure.
It does answer my question, and this is just a new kid question I truly don't know the answer to. When we subcontract, like I'll say, custodial staff or just other staff in, is there, does the board know that ahead of time? And this is just a question I just don't know the answer to. Do we know that we're getting ready to bring in or subcontract these people, individuals outside the district?
If it was going to be something like custodial services, yes, absolutely. I think we'd want to bring that to the board and make sure that you're aware of that. There are times that will, some of our, our traits, you know, using like an electrical service contractor or a plumber, you know, those are kind of the day-to-day maintenance things that if for some reason we need or don't have the skills, the equipment or whatever, we would subcontract, going through the bid process when required and staying within the, the rules of purchasing. But yeah, for something like custodial services, I know in the past there has been some use of temp services, which we do not like to use. And we've had conversations about we will not do that. Because frankly, they are not good custodians. I'll just be one.
Okay, and I just picked on that trade. I mean, you did a, the word trade is a better word for, for this conversation. I just picked on that trade. So, okay, thank you.
This is Wanda Brownie Page. I had a question for Mr. Clements. When we went our last board meeting, when they did the bond update and they showed the different schools about those hand dryers. And you get a lot of reports from the Health Department that those dryers aren't good. And in lieu of, we're in a, in a pandemic. Have they made adjustments for those schools that they put those new dryers in? That it would be better if they had paper towels?
We, we did talk about that, and I'll be honest with you. I did say that we can make some adjustments, and I can't say that I've got that complete done yet. But yeah, that's on the, on the radar to try to get that adjusted.
Along that line, this is Dr. Nguyen. Mr. Clements, and this is just a question moving forward. Do we have plans to build shields around the chairs or the tables in the cafeteria?
That question has come up, and I think it's a very good question. I know that, and I don't think that Wayne is on here. Dennis may be able to speak to it. I know that they're looking at getting some bids for some of those things. And, and frankly, we're waiting for some direction to see if that's- And, and frankly, we're waiting for some direction to see if that's the way we want to go. I don't really know the, uh, the efficacy of the efficiency of using those devices. We have installed them in some of the, uh, reception areas. And those are some of the things I think that they're getting some additional pricing on right now.
Okay. Oh, excuse me. Yes.
Yes, we are looking at, uh, they're called personalized shields where the students carry the shield with them. Um, and it will go to the class or to the cafeteria, but it's, hold on, I'll show you the, a prototype that, uh, someone sent us. It sits on the desk like this or at the cafeteria table. And when they get ready to move, you just fold it up and you take it with you.
And that compared to a, um, permanent shield around the teacher's desk or something like that? Or in the cafeteria?
Uh, we're looking into put this, the permanent shield on the teacher's desk, but this is just for students.
Okay. Thank you. Uh, Mr. Anderson, um, a parent asked me, how are middle high schoolers selecting their elective classes?
That's a great question.
Whomever that question goes to.
No, I appreciate it. Um, I have Jody Lynn on, uh, our meeting today and she's got some thinking around, um, the art music PE classes that they've done.
Hello there. We, we have thought through the electives because if you can imagine with 23,000 students, how do you get the needed supplies? And so I'm going to give an art example that might give you a, a little path to the thinking. If you signed up for jewelry or painting, and so jewelry, we need acetylene torches. For painting, you have to have the paint and the brushes and the canvas. And so when you're doing in-person learning, your budget goes a long way when kids are sharing paint and brushes and supplies. And so to outfit every kid would break the bank. And so our electives for fine arts and PE would be limited. And so for art as an example, we do have art history in our catalog and we would start there. For high school, for middle school, we would continue with a more traditional hands-on art. And for our elementary through the supply kits that the central office is providing our kids. And so we've started a deployment operation for all 11,000 elementary kids to get a basic art supply, middle school, that basic art supply in the kit. And so the, the impact is going to be at the high school level with the altered, um, and adjusted electives. So, uh, an example for PE is we can't teach team sports. If you're doing your physical education in isolation. And so any kid that signed up for team sports would go into fitness and conditioning that can be done by yourself with your online remote instructor. Um, another example would be, uh, our choir students where there's not going to be an ensemble that you sing with. You will be able to take choir. Your singing will be done at home. It will be done via video or sometimes when you log on for your Zoom session with your peers, there would be some singing, but you do that at home. So the catalog is reduced for the high school, but we will be able to offer electives for middle school pretty much with integrity.
So had the parents been communicated this?
We have just started the communication through the principal's administrator notice this week. And through the curriculum department. And so getting that notice out to parents would be the next step.
And do you have a timeline for that?
I'm not clear where we are in the timeline. Um, we know we need it, it needs to happen quickly so that parents.
Yeah. And principals return on, I believe Wednesday, uh, next week. So we'll have to, we'll work with them to get that information out, work with our counselors to make sure that we get their, um, class schedules adjusted and their, um, master schedules adjusted accordingly.
Thank you.
This is Yolanda again. Um, the plan, I, I hear the plan. It sounds, it sounds good. I'm, I'm concerned about our students that will struggle. And are we, how are we prepping our staff or our schools or teachers to be able to handle those students that are struggling, that are not meeting the time expectations? Um, what, what thought, and I don't know who that question goes to. Uh, what thought has been placed there or what coaching has been given to our staff on how to handle those students? We don't want our students to fail because there's just this acclimation, um, process. If some may not get acclimated.
Just to, it'll take, it'll take a village. It'll take all of us to make sure that this happens. Um, part of our work from our professional development standpoint is this idea of remote learning, making sure kids understand what's expected of them. Especially during the time when we have family advocacy, um, ensuring that they understand the importance of being, um, online as much as they can when teachers are available. We will have office hours available. Um, I know that as we think about schedules, um, we are going to have a more structured schedule this year versus when we had in the spring. Um, because in the spring it was a little more loose. We're going to structure that, uh, to make sure that each hour or a period or a chunk of time is dedicated where teachers are there with students, um, to give them either initial instruction or that they're there to remediate when necessary. According to the state, we have to respond to students within 24 hours. And so we want to make sure that if a student is struggling, that their needs are met immediately. So it, although it'll be a little more difficult in a remote setting, we still are putting in some, uh, structures in place to ensure that we can get to those students who are struggling.
Okay. And so if we have a student that's not reaching out, that we're not hearing from, that are not meeting the expectations. Um, it's like skipping classes. I'm, I'm not skipping in the, I'm skipping at home or wherever I'm skipping. How is that being handled?
Right. So we have our attend to achieve folks that are looking into what will it look like to determine when a student is considered truant? Um, if they're not participating, I mean, we will be working with, um, teachers and buildings to make sure they're reaching out. But when does it become an issue where we have to get others involved? So, um, I'm not sure if Lisa Garcia Stewart's on here, but maybe she could shine a little more light to that. Thank you, Lisa.
Yes, absolutely. Um, so our compulsory attendance statute hasn't changed. It remains three consecutive days, five in a semester and seven in a school year. But we want to be cognizant to what our students and staff are, um, adjusting as we pivot to continuing our remote learning plan. And so our A to A team is working on a document that will help us to identify what to do when students aren't logging in so that we can intervene earlier. Um, and then know when we should refer a student that is chronically absent and then could, um, turn into a truancy matter. Uh, we have a meeting scheduled with our district attorney's office so that we can be aligned with our language when students just aren't logging in at all. But we first want to ask why? What would prevent a student from logging in? What's happening, um, at home that has disrupted their education? So we first want to make sure that we're doing everything we can to holistically help that child, our children and our families if they need resources. So our team is working diligently to have an internal document to help our teachers navigate what that looks like when they're taking attendance and making sure that we're reaching out. Um, as Mrs. Humphries identified, they're working on calling families that we were currently serving that had chronic absenteeism. We're making those calls. We're making sure that we're helping our students that are at promise, uh, potentially at risk that we can help and support. Um, as our team has identified some language to help our students that we know need some extra care.
Thank you.
Uh, this is Wanda Brownlee Page, and I have a few questions from Mr. Anderson. And I, I want to make sure I'm understanding by law, you said we had 360 minutes of learning activities? Is he on?
Yes, I am. Sorry. I said, sorry. I just said, yes, I heard you. I apologize. Yes.
Now the start time, there's been a lot of research on about whether high school and middle schoolers should start at nine, nine-thirty or 10:00. And I didn't know if we were locked in because of the state and the time portions that we have to have. I didn't know if that was taken in consideration or.
So part of what we're going to deal with is because we're in a remote learning setting, um, and we could possibly come back to a in-person setting, we want to keep it consistent as much as possible. So when students do return, um, that they're not too off on their schedules. Um, we will need to put into the system a, a bell schedule for when we do our counts. So it'll need to be pretty consistent throughout the year. Now, with that being said, our goal is to ensure that families and students can still access education, access their teacher at multiple times throughout the day. Um, so even if they can't make it to that hour, they would still have access to get a, a hold of that teacher to still have contact with them. So there's, there's some things that are going to be a little flexible in the remote learning. That wouldn't be as flexible in a, in person, but we haven't adjusted the, the start times for middle or high school at this point.
So I didn't know if the time was based on what the state requires and you having to meet those time limits or how they're set up. And I get what you're trying to do, but you, you hear so much that maybe we shouldn't start them at 7:30. But I didn't know if we were mandated by law to do that because of the time.
I, I don't believe there's a mandate, but, uh, Bridget, you're, you're really deep in with the audit of the minutes. I don't believe there is.
I, I don't believe there's a, a time, but I would think that we'd have to work with teacher schedules too. And, um, for special for the middle and high school kids, they would have to start for their classes, um, at specific times. And I agree with you, the continuity, uh, to keep it so that when we do go to insert and in-seat, um, there won't be a, a, a real jarring change.
Okay. And then my next question, I think, I don't know if this is what Ms. Clark was trying to get to. Is we already have a number of people who are behind. So we had our project literacy program. So how does that work in what we're doing with remote learning? Because they need the help. They're behind. So how do we implement target literacy to make sure that the kids get what they need? Because we got a lot of program and, and if I'm already behind, how do I manipulate those if I'm not where I need to be? And how do we supplement or what are we giving them to help those kids who are behind?
So it's going to take a lot of efforts, uh, from the building level to ensure that they know who those students are. And then they work to provide multiple opportunities throughout the day. So again, it's not just about that initial whole group instruction, even though that's going to be super important. It's going to be important for teachers to have extra time with those students. Um, there isn't a certain, I'll say, program that's going to be able to fix it all. Um, but we do, we're going to continue on with our strong tier one instruction in a remote learning setting. Um, as we do in an in-person setting. But we will need to find opportunities for extra time with those students. So it'll be within the schedules of the teachers to help identify those times and what students they need to be in touch with.
Well, we have, have we established the new target literacy program? And are they going to come in and help the teachers?
So as mentioned, the targeted literacy program was cut. Um, and then we, I do, I sent an informational item or a, a sheet to you all. Our focus this year will be on that tier one instruction, which is that, uh, first established initial teaching of content. And then how do we differentiate within that amount of time? So that you pull a small group of students who need a little more direct instruction to support them. And so that will include your classroom teacher. It will include any co-teachers that are available, um, either a special education or ESL that can come in and support. Um, as well as any of our, uh, pairs and aides that can support with that as well.
And so I can speak for special education. We actually have, um, a regression plan. Uh, we are required by law to, um, at the beginning of the school year, um, have all of our case managers to look at, um, the present levels of students before we closed for COVID. Um, and then assess, um, beginning the first week of school to see if there has been any regression. Um, with an IEP meeting, if there has been regression and to work with parents around how we will recruit for, um, those services. Um, and so our, when on Tuesday, I'll share that plan, um, with you. And so it's a very small amount of time for assessment, um, of regression in providing intensive specialized services. And so all of that work will have to start the first week of remote learning and end by October.
And Kelly brought up, sorry, sorry. Say, um, with our new assessment system as well, we will have diagnostic screeners that can really help pinpoint how to support those students as well. So there's, there's some extra things that we have this year that we've never had in the past that can allow us to pinpoint what students need. And then really, um, dive into instruction that'll best support them as well. So we have that, um, feature too.
Okay. Thank you. And Mr. Covington, this is Brownlee Page again. You showed us the screen and I was wondering if you would try to survey teachers at all grade level? Cause as a former teacher, I can see some of them when they come back in, losing the screen. So what do I do? Cause you don't want to put anybody in jeopardy. And then that's an added stress to that teacher to try to keep up and make sure everybody has that. That's cute. That's nice. But will you give each teacher an extra 10? So if someone comes in and they don't have them, or will there be extra screens in the cafeteria? So if they come in and they don't have them, and I wish we could kind of make sure we talk to the teachers to get a feel from them. Cause they're going to be the actual ones having to deal with that and to try to make sure the kids have them. So I, I didn't know if you would talk to them, cause it seems like it'd be simpler if the screens were on the desk. But I, I, you know.
We, we did look at either the personal screens or the screens on the desk. And if you look at the research, this personal screens were better. The screens on the desk means every time someone gets up, whoever comes behind them, gonna have to clean screens.
Okay. But I can, my concern, I can see them not having them. So will you offer to that classroom, every room at least 10 extra? Cause that's the same problem we had with books. They come, they don't have a book. Then you gotta have some extra books to make sure you cover for the ones who don't have a book. So I'm.
We will have extras, but I don't think we'll have 10 per classroom.
Well, that's what I'm saying.
Some extras.
Okay. I understand what you're doing. That's cool. But I'm just saying as a teacher. Cause even though I might, I average anywhere from 30 to 40. And a lot of times they didn't have the books. So I had to try to make sure we had enough books to cover. So I, I see that as being a problem, but I know we're always in a catch 22. But I'm just saying they would need extras. So if they come in there and they don't have them, to make sure everyone's protected.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm, I'm just, my idea, and that is right.
Okay. I got you now. Okay.
Dr. Charles Letton, oh, I'm sorry.
No, no, go ahead, go ahead.
Well, Dr. Charles, let me ask you a question, then I'll, maybe you want to pass it to Mr. Anderson. Um, parents have, have communicated to me that the IEP progress reports for, because we maybe weren't in, in class face-to-face were, were, um, um, blank for the fourth quarter. And then secondly, so what do you do about that? And then the second question that, that probably you, Mr. Anderson, need to address as well is that how do we handle dyslexia screening? Because since it impacts all students, sure, Dr. Charles, you have your set of students, but then there's that path to all students. So IEP progress be, progress reports being blank, what happens?
So during the fourth quarter, um, there were some IEP progress reports, um, that did not have the data. And so when it comes to the actual regression, we will be looking at the period right before school closed to be able to get starting points and then reassessing. Um, and certainly for families who had those blank IEP meetings, having case managers to reach out to them during the first week that we're back to be able to discuss, um, their concerns around that, cause that is a concern. And then in terms of dyslexia screening, I will invite, um, Matt to join in on this conversation. Because I know that it, um, we certainly have our school psychs, um, um with training and a part of that work. But I think Matt can speak to um best, best, best.
Yep. So we, we will still be required by the state to um assess our students with the screener, and so we will do that. Um, we are working on our assessment schedule for when that needs to be completed. We also need to ensure that we train our teachers on it as well. So we, we're moving forward with that. Once we've identified students that may have um characteristics of dyslexia, the, the screeners that I was discussing earlier will help us pinpoint that. And then we put in interventions to support our students. And then we uh check to see if they're um working. And then if they're not, then we have to go back to the drawing board and see where we might need to re-assess and get more information. And so there's, there's a, a whole process that we, we will go through uh to do all of that work for our students.
Okay. And with permitting, just one more, please. You know, yeah, on the um written response, you, I think I read where you said varsity tutoring contract expired? Was there a final report with that?
There, not specifically. I, that was under Dr. Hookfin, but I will look into it um when Dr. Pitch gets back um to see where we are with all of that. Um, I just wanted you to be aware that varsity tutoring was, are expired. Um, I will be transparent with you. Our principals did not um find it as supportive as maybe it could have been. So um we just were like, you know what? Let's just hold off on moving forward with that again.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Ms. Brownlee.
I'm gonna jump in here really quickly. Um, and, and, and these are, these have been really great questions. So I appreciate all the board members asking and, and all the staff that have been responding. And I'm sure there are some additional questions, but for the purposes of time, and I think some questions might get answered with the next um item on the agenda um with the learning management system that we will use for remote learning. I think it might be, might be good for us to hear from Matt uh about the um learning management system. And that might prompt some additional questions that, that um, that we're, we're discussing now. Um, that might ans- answer some of those or bring some others up. So I wonder if we can move on. Ms. Page, yeah?
I'm sorry. I, I had a couple. I don't think that would fall under that. Uh, and I wanted to ask the nurse, will the nurses be there on campus to take the temperature? Of the people who will be coming in to check on them? So before they even enter the building, will they check them before they come in? Because the first nine weeks, the only, if those who chose to come in will be there, I'm assuming the principals, the vice principals, some of the secretarial staff, the janitors, will the nurses be there to check them in? Or who's going to check these people in?
Can I, could, I'm sorry, I'm not the nurse. I'm Doug, but I'll, I'll uh, and I know Elizabeth is on here somewhere, but I will stay and she's probably going to respond. That the district through TIS purchased, uh, there were freestanding uh temperature scanner. And uh, the district has purchased a number of those for each location. And we distributed those out uh uh Wednesday and yesterday. So they're out on all sites. They have to be a little bit of assembly, but they should be fully operational Monday. And you just walk up to the, looks like an iPad. You put your face about fifteen inches from the screen. It tells you to put a mask on. It tells you what your temperature is.
Oh, okay. That's neat. I like that. And then my, then my last question goes to Ms. Tishman. The training for the subs, if I saw it correctly, it only said one day. It, do you think that's sufficient?
That was for those individuals who are kind of in a, we don't know how we're going to use them yet. They may be available. But the long-term subs, which we already do have some of those assigned, they will go through the same training as the teachers are going through, because they are going to be the teacher.
Oh, okay. Yeah. But I didn't know if that was enough to, they'll be familiar with all the sites that if they had to fill in for somebody, they would be able to get on and know what the programs are. I'm just asking.
Yeah, no, we're, we're working on several things for subs. So I just want you to know that. We do have um some uh protocols that we're working on with building principals around subs that come in on a, you know, occasional basis. And we will look at other training that we can give subs throughout the year. We just don't have it fully worked through yet.
And then one last question, and I'm going to move on. Maybe I didn't see it, so I apologize. How many vacancies do we have for teachers? I, I didn't think I saw that, but I.
You'll get that in your, you have that. Um, actually, I'll send that to you today in your board library documents I give you every time before a board meeting. But Cynthia tells me we have sixty-three uh open positions on certified.
Okay. Thank you. And I, and thank you all.
And thank you again, everybody, for the questions. I, and I'm not trying to cut anyone's questions short. Um, I think these are important questions. I thought maybe it'd be good for Matt to give us his information. And then on the backend, if we have additional questions, whether it's about the learning management system or additional questions that might be prompted for other staff members, um, we can continue that on. And then, um, yeah, so Matt, I think you have the next agenda item as well.
Sounds good. Thank you, Mr. President. Um, again, this is a really exciting opportunity um for us as a district um for remote learning, um, not even just remote learning. We need, needed a learning management system for a few years now. And I'm excited that we have the possibility of getting something. And it's going to be super um integral for the success of remote learning. And so I'm not going to lead the presentation. Ms. Julie Leach, um, she is in our curriculum and instruction department. She works alongside with our technology integration team. Um, and she's going to give you a presentation on the work that she's done um over the last month and a half or two around um learning management system and finding what's going to be best for Kansas City, Kansas Public Schools. So um, I'm going to let Julie Leach get us started. Thank you, Julie.
Thank you, Matt. Uh, board, uh, Madam, Madam Vice President, Mr. President, thank you all for your time today. Um, I am very excited to be able to present to you uh this afternoon, um, our finding around a learning management system. And before I get started, I just want to say that this was a um teacher effort. Our teachers rallied. We had quite a few teachers on a team that volunteered a lot of time over the summer to help us with this. So we're really, I'm really excited that we had so many teachers and parents and staff members um on board, kind of helping us through this process. And so just a real quick overview for those of you who may not understand, a learning management system is really an all-in-one hub for um how learning can be delivered. Um, it allows for communication. It allows for um course management. Many of us used a learning management system in our college coursework. And now what we've seen is that's, that piece has moved down into the K-12 area. And so if you've used a learning management system in college, this is very similar um and a little bit more robust than what even I used when I went through my master's program. And so I'm really excited that we have this opportunity. Um, just a little background, during continuous learning last spring, we did utilize two platforms uh across the board. For pre-K through fifth grade, we uh utilized Seesaw. There were some classrooms that used Google Classroom, fourth and fifth grade, um, just because they were a little bit more comfortable with it. But it was, they had access to Seesaw if they wanted to. Um, Seesaw allowed for students to demonstrate learning through video or images or all different, you know, modalities. But teachers were able to provide lessons to students um online and then had some parent communication access. Google Classroom was used in our sixth through twelfth grade classes. Um, most students had utilized Google Classroom already, so it was an easy transition. Uh, however, when looking at both of these platforms, neither one of them are a full learning management system. Uh, I'm also a parent in the district. I have two children in the district. Um, I have a incoming sixth grader and a sophomore, or she will be a sophomore at Sumner. Um, one of the things that I think I found out and kind of panicked a little bit was I wasn't getting information around what they were having to do, what were their lessons. Um, I kind of knew a general idea of what they were supposed to be doing. Um, but that communication aspect from a parent perspective was lacking. And so as our students get older, they have to have, and parents have to have the ability to see, what are the activities that my children need to be doing throughout the, the week? Um, what have they done, what they haven't done, and how can I communicate easily with teachers? And so when we looked at both of these platforms, uh, both of them are fantastic, but they didn't include all of the pieces that we need to really provide remote learning as best as we can. And so, you know, once again, we were looking at all of the different reasons why we needed to look for a full learning management system. Um, we did have two platforms. So if a parent had students in kindergarten and a child in middle school, they might be utilizing two different systems to um get information. So we needed a one-stop shop. Streamline communication. It is also um a college preparatory thing. So our students, when they move into college, uh, they will be utilizing a learning management system. It also will allow for us to transition easily between in-person teaching and remote learning. And so it will be a very simple transition, even though the logistics of that can be difficult. We want the learning to be seamless. Um, again, it's very clear. Um, and we are able to create, hopefully, create blueprint courses so that there's consistency across the district as well as the opportunity to deliver online professional learning for our teachers as well as for our parents. And so that is another opportunity that we will have within a learning management system, which is why we said this is why we needed to go with a full learning management system. So um, we also looked at some survey results. So I'm not going to kind of read through these, but I will let you know, we did survey all of our uh teachers around what was most important when purchasing or looking at a learning management system. And then we looked at what our parents and our students said within the continuous learning survey. And what were the things that stood out within there as to what would be needed moving forward, especially if we were going to be doing remote learning quite a bit. And so these were just some of the pieces that they said. Um, the easy navigation has been big, especially um for our primary teachers, kindergarten, pre-K, um, as well as the ability to communicate with our teachers and our families. So that was a really a big piece. So this is just some of the components that we looked at. Um, just a real quick overview of our process. I will tell you, um, all of the staff that participated in this did this voluntary. So um, this was all voluntary. Um, the initial staff that responded to our survey was about four hundred. Um, but then we had um over seventy-five, um, actually, it was about two hundred people participate in the demonstration of the learning management systems, the evaluation. But then also we had about seventy-five, if not more, people uh provide recommendations on which one they felt would be the best. Uh, these were staff members, parents, as well as students. And so we wanted to make sure we covered all bases when it came to the recommendation of a learning management system. These were the systems that we looked at uh to make sure that we covered as many as we could. We did look at Infinite Campus. Um, a small group of us looked at Infinite Campus, um, but it is not, again, a full learning management system. Um, and it was not presented to teachers. The three systems that we looked at were Schoolology, which is um used by Turner here locally. We also looked at Canvas, which is uh currently Shawnee Mission, uh just purchased Canvas, but it has been used by Blue Valley and North Kansas City for quite a while. Um, we did look at a new product called Sway three sixty. Um, we did not look at Blackboard, um, mainly because Blackboard's prices are pretty high, as well as there are not as many users. There's no K-12 users here in the area. And we really felt we needed someone um locally so that way we could lean on them for support um and for troubleshooting and just getting some ideas. And so the three we looked at were Schoology, Canvas, and Sway three sixty. Um, all did vendor presentations, um, and all, you know, they did a great job. And our teachers participated in all of that. But based on those three presentations, you will notice that we had about sixty-five percent of our users or of our participants recommend Canvas as our learning management system. Uh, many of the reasons were, uh, it was easy, very, very visual, um, lots of graphics and the ability to collaborate with districts here locally. So we have lots of support locally um to help us out. Um, as well as the exciting pieces, there is unlimited access to professional development. There is a huge professional development library that we will have access to for our teachers um that includes on-demand webinars as well as on-demand training that they will have access to. So it's unlimited. Um, for support, um, for our staff, there will be twenty-four hours access a day, every day of the week. So they will have access to if they have a problem, if they have issues. Staff will be able to uh get support twenty-four hours a day. We are still working on a plan for parents and students on how their support will look. I am already working with TIS around that. We also know that several districts here locally utilize Canvas, and so we're going to be able to lean heavily on them uh to help us navigate and roll this out to our teachers. And then also the very last thing was a lot of our colleges here locally are beginning to use Canvas and other learning management systems. And by providing this opportunity for our students, we feel it will give our students a leg up when they enter into the higher ed realm. So here is our three-year cost proposal from Canvas. Um, and Matt, I'll kind of let you um tag in here as well. Um, our first year would be right around a hundred and twenty-three thousand dollars. It's dependent on numbers. Um, and then, um, Matt, if you wanted to talk a little bit about funding?
Absolutely. So for the first two years, we would um utilize CARES funds. And CARES funds, I put a little blurb over on the side to help um shine light on why this is a, a a purchase that's allowable by the CARES funds. And so one of the things that the board had approved, um, I think it was a few weeks ago, was to ensure that our students that do not have Wi-Fi connectivity have connectivity. We've purchased more um devices to ensure all students have a device. The piece that we're missing out of all of that is the software piece. It's great to have technology. It's great to have connectivity. But if you don't have the learning management system behind it, remote learning is going to be a struggle. And so that's why we've identified CARES funds as being a way to pay for those. Um, year three, um, we would budget for uh the twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three uh year. And so that would allow us to identify which departments, because a learning management system sits in multiple departments. It sits within TIS and it also sits within curriculum and instruction. So it'll allow us to identify how we can pay for this on that year three. Um, Julie, would you just briefly talk about how we negotiated the price for Canvas? Because they were a little higher than this when we first got the quote.
Absolutely. They were a little higher. And so we went back to kind of the drawing board and I just was very honest with them and said, you know, this was not going to be an option, but we would really like to go with them. So they pared down a lot of the training opportunities, um, because we will get unlimited training for teachers. And so based on that, we were able to eliminate any of those live uh trainings um because we are going to be able to pull in some of the unlimited, which includes all of the live training that they would have provided us anyway. Um, and so we were really able to negotiate a good price um with them. So it was a, it was just kind of a, you might as well ask, and the worst they would say is no, and they said yes. And so, yeah, it worked out really well in our favor.
Yeah, I think they went down about sixty thousand dollars.
Yeah, it was a good, we got a good deal. So we're really excited. Um, last but not least, based on that proposal and the unlimited training, we did want to let you know that we do have an implementation timeline. Um, based on when we approve the purchase, um, it is about a four-week process to get it in, up and running. Um, sometimes they can get it done a little bit faster, but it really depends on how quickly our uh TIS department and Canvas can work together to get the accounts created. So while we're waiting on that to happen, um, staff will have access to a sandbox, so kind of a place to play around and see how to use things. But they will also be learning around, learning, um, what is remote learning, getting a good common understanding, and then truly planning for remote learning. Um, one of the things that I like to say is that it is kind of like we are shooting a movie. And before you do the movie, you have to do all of the planning and preparation before you can even begin to do your shots. And so we're doing all of that upfront. And so that way, when teachers are given access to their accounts, they will have what is called a blueprint course, which will be developed by a cadre of teachers here in the district. Um, it'll be a much smaller group. That way we have consistent classes, um, shells of classes across the system. So that way, when teachers get access to their accounts, then they will be able to just start plugging in all that planning that they had already done upfront. And so we will be providing learning for them prior to them getting access to their full accounts. So that way they're just ready to roll uh once they're available. After that, we will continue with on-demand professional learning through Canvas. So it will all kind of go through Canvas and will base um many of the learning modules based on the needs of just a, a teacher. based on the needs of teachers. The other thing that we will be able to do is begin to provide learning modules for our families as well as our students. And so there is access. Canvas has access for parents, so parents have a little parent portal. It is web-based, as well as there is an app for that, students as well. So we'll make sure, we will be developing training courses for both students and families to make sure that they have access to the training modules. The other nice thing is that Canvas does use a, what they call an immersive reader, so it will allow for the translation of much of what they see into multiple languages. So that way, we can hit all of our languages across the system. The other nice thing that I will kind of reiterate is that we do have lots of neighboring districts who are utilizing Canvas. And they are more than willing to share a lot of their best practices and their learning with us. And so that way, we're not, you know, starting from scratch. We have Kansas districts that we can lean on when we roll this out. So with that, I, this is the end of our presentation, and it's open up for questions.
This is Janie Humphries. I have a couple of questions. Can you, Dr. Charles, can you kind of give me a review of Goalbook? And how this will work with Canvas? And also, Matt, with the new curriculum that we've purchased, how this will work with this Canvas program? And how all this works together?
Absolutely. Actually, sorry, Kelly, I'll jump in first. Actually, Julie's already been thinking about this and working with. We've been trying to, knowing that we haven't made any decisions, we just had to work with all of our vendors that we've been working with from a curriculum instruction standpoint to make sure that they could work with any of the three learning management systems that we're looking at. So all of these will integrate nicely into that, and so there will be ability to do that. And Julie, I can let Julie speak a little more, just to give you an idea of what that all entailed.
Yeah, so all of the vendors that we work with work through a process called a learning inter- you have to help me out. Learning interoperability. It's learning technology interoperability. So it's an LTI. It's a, like, I've had to learn a lot of vocabulary. And so that allows us to integrate with multiple platforms. So for example, all of our curriculum resources will integrate within the platform. And then Goalbook will be able to integrate. And then also, I found out earlier this week that Illuminate, which is our assessment platform, will also integrate within the system. And so our goal is, is that students have a one-stop shop, that they're not having to, I've got to log into this, and then I need to log into this, and then I, just to get access to all of their things, that it's all housed in one area.
So we don't have to worry about Illuminate talking to Goalbook, and Goalbook not talking to Canvas and having to move information back and forth.
Right.
And Julie, really quick, we also have the Zoom integration in that as well. I love Canvas. I've been working with it forever, and I, you know, I love developing course shells. And that's one of the things that I do for my staff and I, because we do, we switch from Blackboard to Canvas, and it's much user-friendly. And I love it, because as you mentioned that, once you create that shell or that main outline for the class, then there can be that same consistency, and teachers could also put in their own information. And I love it, because I have children in multiple grades. And so we were going from Google Classroom to CSO to different ones, but it's very good that they're all merged together. So when we, so with that integration, the Zoom can be saved either in the local area or online. Are we going to have teachers basically saving them for us to watch outside of Canvas? Or will that be something that you guys ultimately have saved in Canvas? Or have you guys thought about that?
For privacy, right now, we have, for currently, what we're saying is they need to be housed within Canvas because of privacy. And so we want to make sure we respect our students' privacy. So currently, we're saying they need to be housed within Canvas. Now, if a teacher creates a video of them teaching without students, then I would say that could absolutely be shared outside of Canvas. But anything with students needs to be housed within the system.
Okay, great. And like I said, I'm very proficient in Canvas. If you need, you know, there's no-
I may be leaning on you for creation of those blueprint courses.
I love doing it. I love it.
Good.
This is Julie. This is Dr. Winn, and I'd like to thank Janie for asking that question, because that's the discussion we've been having, that many times, as we've been presented, you know, a certain software, that it was the end-all to the end-all. We use Blackboard at the community college. Been doing that for about 20 years. However, some assignments that students will present are not compatible. Also, the learning curve, you've scheduled these professional development, I guess you'd say four to five weeks. But is there, who on, who, let's say, at a particular school? You say you have 24/7 support. But is there someone at each school that is within, you know, two-second call for the teachers, for the staff, to be able to get that support? The learning curve is going to be steep, we realize.
So Julie's internet dropped. She just texted me, so she apologizes. She's jumping back on. One thing that Julie and I have talked about, Dr. Winn, as you said, it's a learning curve, and you want to ensure you've got, instead of just the 24/7 system, that we would have a representative from each building that would get trained specifically to kind of be that go-to person. So that way, we have somebody on-site that can support them. And Julie, and when she returns, we'll ask her a little more about what that might look like. But we've had that conversation. We've relied heavily on the vendors to give us this PD upfront, but then we don't ever build the capacity within the system as well as we should. And so that's our goal, is to make sure we've got people that can support at the site level, too.
Because there's always a little feature that, at any given time, grading any given paper, and the student submitting work as well. It may not be compatible.
Yeah.
Thank you.
And I would say, switching from various platforms and using CSO and Google Classroom and having students submit everything from, you know, graphing, mathematics, and finance, or et cetera. I think, and using CSO, it's the same outline for most LMSSs. So I don't think the learning curve will be too bad, because you go in and set it up just like the teachers had set up the CSO by scheduling what they need to do it, they pull in the resources. So I think, you know, the teachers having that adaption in this spring semester, I think they would do really good. A lot of the incoming professors that I teach from other universities, usually that learning curve is similar, because all LMSSs kind of work the same. But Canvas is really user-friendly. It's a lot of drag and drop, and you can use other people's ideas. And there's a great chat feature within it as well. So I think it's a, it's a great universal program that a lot of universities I see use.
This is Wanda Brownlee Page. And I just wanted to know, would this system provide the strategies and literacy resource and content that would benefit our students? In essence, will our kids be able to use it? For those who may have some learning deficiencies?
William, I don't know what you're-
Julie, are you able to answer that question? Okay, we lost her again. I will, Jackie, you've used-
I was just gonna jump in. So I was in a district that rolled it out maybe four years ago, and what that looks like. And the continuous, like, professional development is there. And while it's nice to have someone in the building that's proficient in it, I can say that Canvas is like literally a phone call or a chat bar, and they can access that and work side by side with you. So if there were some issue with that, and then I used it as a language teacher, and all of my content was put on Canvas in Spanish, and my kids were able to access that very well, and even use the internet browser to translate the language that they needed. And Canvas does come in a robust selection of languages. Not all of the languages that we need, but my team has already talked about how we can access that 24-hour professional development and host ongoing sessions for parents. So to play the video with no sound, and them to be able to do it in a language like Mong, so that they can also become proficient to help parents, and then utilize that in the same kind of a setting, like we just saw the presentation, but with the resources that are available to parents. So those are things that we've already planned through. It is a very visual platform that plays very nicely with a lot of the resources that we're already using in the district that allow for the reading, writing, speaking, and the listening that our kids need.
So this would help the kids who had limited skills be able to perform better. It would help them enhance their skills if they're at a lower level.
It will be more robust than if we were using Google Classroom, because there's more features within this learning management system that we didn't have before through CSO and through Google Classroom. So things like a discussion board that we couldn't use with CSO, we can now use that, which helps students with their writing abilities. Actually, their typing abilities, too. We, like we said, it'll integrate with all of our curriculum resources, so we will be able to put in those English language art resources that we just purchased into the system to allow accessibility. And then, within those resources, there are also things that support that differentiation for students with some different needs. So it's not maybe the learning management system that's going to do that, but it's the teacher and the resources that they're using within their instruction that will, that will support those students, versus it just being about the learning management system. It'll be an easy way for, it'll be easy for kids to use, so they don't have to try to navigate so many different things.
This is Yolanda. What does that do for Infinite Campus? Does it change where grades are being housed, and how parents are accessing missing assignments? I know Janie talked a little bit about how systems will talk to each other.
Absolutely.
So I can answer that. And first of all, I have to apologize. My internet decided to go a little crazy on me there for a few minutes. But I will let you know, so they use what is called PassBack. So parents will still have access to Infinite Campus to look at grades. However, they don't have to go there to look at grades. They can actually just go into Canvas and look, because all of the grades that are within Canvas will pass to Infinite Campus and back and forth. So teachers will only have to put in grades in Canvas, and they will not have to go into Infinite Campus to do grades. Attendance will still need to be done in Infinite Campus, but that's the only piece that they will need to go in there for. So what Infinite Campus does provide is all of the data and, you know, information for Canvas, but they will, they'll just pass back and forth to one another.
Clarify, Julie, when the assignments are missing, or alerts can be set in Canvas. So parents can set up alerts to come to their email or other areas. So if their student is missing something, they will get alerted if they sign up for their alerts.
Infinite Campus does that as well. I've received some alerts from that system as well, which goes into my next question. Should, I mean, how should we, if this is approved, how do we roll this out to our families? Do we, do we say we have these two platforms? Or do we really start using Infinite Campus for the purpose of our staff and leave Canvas to our parents and students?
So I will speak as a parent. I would actually rather use Canvas for looking at things, just because it's cleaner. For me, I thought Infinite Campus, as a parent, was a little bit hard to look at. So I would personally recommend us move towards just having parents utilize Canvas as their one-stop shop for communication. Plus, it does allow that two-way communication with teachers that Infinite Campus doesn't allow for. So it would just allow that one-stop shop.
Okay. And then my last question is, and I don't know if you'll have this answer, or if I'll have to look at Mr. Covington. Are we still, does this change our contract with Infinite Campus if we go one way? Do we just need a certain portion? I don't know those answers to how the system is broken down and what we're paying for.
Well, before, before Dennis answers, one of the things that I would highly recommend is that if you, if we're looking to a learning management system versus how we're putting the grades and all those other things, where we hit, we misstep with Infinite Campus is that we didn't pilot it, and we just went everybody cold turkey. That's not the way I would ever say that we should do it. So we would need to pilot it amongst the others before you just introduce it to everyone, because technology, skill level, skill set is different. So with, you know, what the teachers are doing and what they're wanting to do with this learning management system, I think that's one side. But when we introduce it to, if that's the goal, if that's what we're wanting to do, I think you need to slow that part down and do a slow rollout so that it does not confuse everyone, because that was not a, we didn't effectively roll Infinite Campus out for everyone, and that was a lot of backlash on that one.
Yeah. Okay, I appreciate it. I know as a parent, even I struggle with, like, what system are we using? So that was where my questions were coming from with, okay. Thank you.
Well, so, but to answer the question, is there a financial support to Infinite Campus as long as you continue to use Infinite Campus?
I personally have not reviewed the Infinite Campus contract. But if there is a piece that we are paying for that we no longer need, I'm sure we have an out clause in that, that we can reduce that contract.
Thank you. And Mr. Anderson, when did you say, or do you have any indication, when the state of Kansas will talk about the state assessments, the cap, or whatever, we're taking first?
They, according to our interim director, he just sent an email a couple days ago that said the state hadn't given them a specific timeline. They're trying to work it out. They had just agreed a contract with KU, but they were still working out the details as we try to get through this remote learning. So once I do know that, I can send information to you and give you an update on where they are.
Well, probably more important is, though, how then do we plan to prepare the teachers and the students for that?
So once we know what the state's going to move forward with, because what the system is, it's, it needs to be within the district. And so I think they're trying to figure out how they're going to allow people who are in remote learning to access the system outside of, I'll say, KCKE Public Schools walls. So out of our system, but I'm not sure how they've, they've gone about doing that. Once we know what that's going to look like, then we provide the training for our teachers to make sure that they're able to administer the assessment in the way that they need to. But unfortunately, we don't have any details about that.
Right. So, you know, there's a lot of training that will be needed. So are you, you know, like, leaving space per, I mean, nine weeks is not a long time.
No, no, no. So the state assessment training won't be as big of an issue as some of the new systems. So the state assessment training will just be like, this is how you administer this. And that could be done throughout a PLC. So as we went through our plan, what can be done where we didn't have those access to Wednesday afternoons? That's one where we could provide a short tutorial on, this is how it's going to be. The state assessment stuff, a lot of our teachers are very familiar with it, and you've got assessment coordinators at buildings, so they support that work at the sites.
Well, I mean, but that was a generic question, because with the new learning management system, with the mandatory trainings, the first nine weeks are going to be full.
Very full.
Yes.
Thank you. You're welcome.
And what about pre-tests? Will they continue that?
So the interim assessments, all part of that same Kansas assessment program. They're still working on all those as well.
And when will you need a decision on this? Is that for Tuesday, that you would like approval on this?
So yes, so today was our opportunity to give you the time to understand what the learning management system is that we're proposing, give you some time to think about other questions over the weekend and Monday. And then on Tuesday, we'll come back and seek your approval.
Okay, thank you.
You're very welcome.
This is Yolanda. As we're coming back on Tuesday, I want to understand what options we have. Dr. Faust brought up a good point. Are we, I mean, are options, we roll this out now? Are options, we roll this out in 2021? Are options that we pilot this now? 2021, are options that we pilot this now? Are we just looking for full-blown, let's, let's go? I want to make sure I understand what we're looking for.
The only option that I had spoken with them and we had talked about was using the LMS as the teaching tool, not to convert it for all the grading, all those other things.
Okay.
That wouldn't be something that would be only for, because we don't have a housing system versus like they were saying, the CSO and the Google Classroom, which was, so it's only for that housing of the instructional piece.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
Any other questions for Matt or the team?
I just have one clarifying question. This is Janie Humphries. As of right now, we don't know, you're still talking with the state about whether parents will have to do a daily log or whether it'll be, they'll accept attendance taken by a teacher, correct?
That is correct.
Okay, but we still are under the instruction that every child has to, has to be checked in with a teacher every day, correct?
Daily contact with your, a teacher has to be done every day.
Right. So those are two separate items, correct?
Yes. And then the daily log, which can be housed within our learning management system, so they can access it, so they could do it within that system as well. So it's a one-stop-shop.
But that's separate than the, the daily contact with the teacher thing. Those are two separate items.
Yeah, and it would still be a part of, part of that instructional time that they could document. I met with my teacher today and, yep.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure I understood. Thanks.
Thank you, Janie.
This is Wanda Brownlee Page. I had a question for Josh. What time are they going to serve the meal? I, I saw the days of the week and maybe I missed it, but what time are they going to serve the meals to the kids?
We're going to keep our, our current times, so I believe we're serving from 11 to 2 and we'll continue that. And just for clarification, during the summer, we're off, able to offer six meals per week, but since we're only in school five days per week, we're only going to be allowed to offer five. So it'll be two Monday, two Wednesday, or two Monday, two Friday, and one Wednesday.
And that wouldn't, is just lunch, right? Or is it
Breakfast and lunch.
Oh, okay. Two Monday, two Wednesday?
Two Monday, one Wednesday, two on Friday.
So do they get anything for the weekend? You know, in the past, we've provided backpacks for kids to take home. So is that something we're still going to do or we're not going to do?
So the backpack program is through Harvesters. We're not allowed to provide meals on the weekend because students aren't in school on the weekend. And so whether or not we're content, interested in continuing Harvesters, that's not something I manage.
Okay. And before, and I'm hoping we got it better situated, when someone got sick, everything shut down and the kids didn't get anything. So hopefully, that won't be an issue for this night.
I believe we've taken care of that issue and by expanding to 24 locations, I can guarantee you we'll have plenty open every day.
And who can pick these meals up?
Students.
Okay. And is that time slot allotted in the minutes and for the learning? We got 360 minutes of activities, so do they allow that time slot for them to go and get their meals and come back?
I can say that on a traditional student count, we don't get to count the time that students are at lunch.
So that's not included in the count?
No, it would not be included in the count.
Okay.
And Mrs. Page, this is Lisa Stewart. We have maintained our partnership with Harvesters and for the schools that maintain the relationship since March and those that had the drive-through services, we've continued to provide additional support.
Okay. Thank you, ma'am.
So I'll jump in, seeing no other questions. This has been really helpful for, for me, I know personally, just hearing the update. I know there's questions that continue to swirl. There's still information that we're still trying to work through, but this update was really helpful, both in the reentry and the learning management system as we continue to move forward with this, this upcoming school year. So again, just want to appreciate, to say thank you to the staff that are continuing to work on this. I know it's a work in progress and so we'll, we'll continue to get updates as things change and fluctuate for, for, but for now, today, the update was really beneficial for me and hopefully, board members, I, I know you submitted some questions, we submitted questions. If you didn't get an answer to a question that you want to know more about, we still have an opportunity on Tuesday to hear a follow-up update. I know there are some specific departments that will be giving an update on Tuesday, so I would just ask if you, from our board members, if you have additional questions, as we have in the past, it's customary, if you could send Wanda and I those questions by Monday at noon, that will give us time to give to our staff so that they have those questions to prepare for our Tuesday's board meeting. Again, this was, this was really beneficial. I know that things continue to fluctuate and, and this will be something that, that we'll continue to work through. But I, I just want to say that I think we're, we're in a unique opportunity for our school district to really reimagine what learning looks like, right? Going into the school year, we're seeing a lot of challenges, but, but, but I, I want, I want us to also look at the opportunities that, that present themselves and what we can, how we can reimagine learning for all of our students and families and teachers. How do we engage families in that learning? I think that's a critical component, whether it's through the learning management system, whether it's through student services or all departments. How do we engage those family members in the education of their students, knowing that there are unique barriers with each, with each different student and family? So this is really an opportunity for us to come together and reimagine learning and education for our students, so I don't want us to lose sight of that while we still uphold the highest quality of education. So I go back to Ms. Page's comments about restructuring the time, you know, what, what time do students come into school? I think that's a great question, something for us to continue to think through as we move forward. But again, just reimagining our educational system so that we're continuing to improve every single day what, what we offer to our students. And then I think, you know, some of the questions that I heard today also that to sum up is, we still want to, want to know what, what it looks like practically, right? And we know there is not going to be a typical day for a student or for a staff member that comes into the building, but those questions of who's checking temperatures, who's asking the questions, I think those are very practical questions that, that, that we still want to see some and have some answers for. And as we work through them, I, I think, you know, I appreciate those questions because we want to keep our staff safe. We want to make sure everyone's following all the proper guidelines. So I think that, that's super helpful when we bring up those questions. You know, it, it may be helpful to, to think through and, and to, to let our, our families know that are watching. This is what a typical learning day or quote-unquote typical learning day might look like for your student or for you as a family or for you as a teacher, if you're coming into the building, this is what it's going to look like. So I think people, it, it gives a sense of ease when you know what you're walking into a little bit more. So some of those things I think are important to, to, to cover as well. But again, we'll, we'll have further conversation on Tuesday. Send us your questions and we'll get those to staff. Ms. Page and I can, can receive your questions. And with that, I, I'll just ask if there are any last-minute questions or comments from either board, Ms. Page, or staff members before we, we finish up today. I, I would be remiss just not to remind everyone that the census is still out there and, and please fill out your census. Unfortunately, the administration has decided to cut the census short by a month, so by the end of September, if I'm not mistaken, we have to complete our census. And we know how critical the census count is for our educational system. So I would encourage us all to continue to push the census and ask folks to fill out the census where we can. But I'll shut up now. If there are any further questions or comments, Ms. Page, did I
Mr. Lopez, let me just ask Mr. Covington the perennial question. So have all the additional devices and the PPEs you already talked about, we haven't decided on the shields yet, have they been ordered?
We are working on the devices. We come to find out that we need to order devices according to the towers that we're close to. So Joe and Rashid was working on that and I would need to get an update on that today, ma'am. But no, I don't think they've all been ordered.
Ooh, September 8th will be here.
And I have a follow-up question to Dr. Winn. What resources will we be having this time? Will we have a call center like we did last time for parents to call in when they're having technical issues or questions as they start their students out?
Yes.
Or support, okay.
I think that's a great point in terms of, is there, is there a feedback loop for parents and students and community members to make sure that we are processing that learning, any challenges or opportunities that, that we might have? I think that's an important part, Ms. Clark, so thank you. It sounds like there is, and so maybe some further conversation on what that might look like for families can be given at a later time. So thank you.
And Mr. Lopez, can we resend? Because I got a couple of emails from teachers who weren't sure what we were doing. I don't know what happened, but they need to understand, school doesn't start till the eighth, it's virtual, and they have an option. They can come in or stay at home. And some people were still a little confused about that.
Thank you, Ms. Page. If, if, maybe our communications, Mr. Birch, or you could work with Dr. Faust or Mr. Linkus to make sure that, that's communicated appropriately again for our staff, whether they're certified, classified. And I'd encourage them to reach out to their supervisors and/or HR to, to, to ask specifically their own unique circumstances.
And will we mandate masks?
That'll be a board decision.
Okay, we need to decide that.
Yeah, so I'll be thinking about that as well. All right, hearing no further questions or thoughts, again, thank you. We will have our board meeting regularly scheduled Tuesday, this coming Tuesday, August 11, so we will see you all there. This meeting is adjourned. Everyone have a great weekend. Thank you so much.
Thank you all, everybody.
Thank you.